That seems like a pretty good deal to me for the town. You don't know exactly what you're getting into, but I like the flexibility of having a contract that can be terminated. I probably personally would have chosen three years over four years, but I completely agree with the assessment that one or two years is not sufficient. You need to give somebody the ability to get to know the trees in the town before you can really see their value, and maybe four years is the right number there, so I'm fine to go with staff's judgment.
If I could, you touched on an important subject, Vice Mayor, is that we already have a arborist/park expert that we're paying, I think, thirty thousand dollars for, and we're going to have this person do some of that work, as you just suggested, and has been suggested earlier today, that might be savings that would kind of level things out from that standpoint. I understand that there's a little bit more work than perhaps we're getting accomplished due to the construction and review of plans and things like that, and it's not clear to me that that's not a blip, and it won't level out over the next couple years. So, you know, I'm more of the line if we're going to go the contract way, which is really a potential support from me. I would like my colleagues to consider a three-year. Obviously, we can always extend, and obviously, we can always hire if we choose to at any one point in time, or we could change, but because of the perturbations up and down, you know, a four-year commitment to me is, I think, is a step too far, and I would also say one of the -- this person's job would be some of the things that we have Mr. Murdoch doing. You know, we don't want to have overlap, and we want to make sure we keep this person busy. One of the issues we had with the past arborist was that potentially she didn't have enough to do, but, you know, whether or not that was true or not, but she found herself getting involved in a lot of other activities. And then when the decision was made to decide that was going to be a contract job and a non-core job, as you know, for those of you who watched, and for those of you who were actually on the council at the time, that was a very difficult decision for all of us to participate in, and it's not something we should take lightly and just go back and rehire again, because it is a very difficult thing, and we don't want to have to repeat that. It's not fair to the employees, and it's not fair to the residents, and I don't think it's fair to the people that have to be making the decision. So, you know, I think that we should be very, very careful adding the cost and adding a headcount, and I think we should be very, very careful and cautious, you know, in increasing our operational costs. We have plenty of other things to spend our money on, like infrastructure, and we need to pay attention to that. So, I'm willing to discuss and consider a three-year contract term, but that's, I think, as far as I think I can go. And Vice Mayor, you seem to echo that. I don't know if you'd consider moving in that direction.
Councilman Morris, are you interested in amending your motion to a three-year contract?
Can I ask a question before you do that?
You can.
Is it staff's judgment that there's a real difference between some, in terms of the pool of potential applicants, if somebody's looking at a four-year term versus a three-year term?
I think there could be. I mean, we don't know until we put it back out to them and see who drops out, but it could be, and Steve did.
Mayor, council, sorry I'm a little late getting here, that is just what happened, but, you know, I dig that through the -- we received a huge amount of applications, and we already vetted through a number of them for qualifications basis, and it seems that most of these people, you know, that we're looking for to do the type of work that we really need here in town right now, which, by the way, the number-one need in this town, I've been one of the strongest advocates for getting the forty-hour arborists into the town, because I've seen what's, you know, we've got some huge issues on our construction sites right now. They're very difficult for us to handle with the amount of time that our town arborists are, so we need to get that under control first. Our street trees and our park trees are this much compared to private property trees that are out there right now, with huge construction projects going on in them with no oversight. They all start out as really good, you know, friends of the trees, and once or six months into the jobs, we walk out there, we're not always getting that compliance, things go up and down, so we need to get really strong in there. And it was what I started saying was the applicants, the predominance of them are people in the supervisor and management ranges of tree companies. Some of them will be very good at that, hard-nosed, dealing with the contractors, getting them straightened out. We're going to have to ask them to leave job in those positions. Currently, they have benefits, and they have, you know, pretty good pay scales. To ask them to leave for one or two years, even three, I really support the four-year as a way to get them to come to us, because there's a handful of really good ones out there that we have a chance to get right now, because you know I've been out, you know, headhunting a few of them to make sure that they were going to be in our application. Well, I wanted to make sure certain people turned in applications for us to get a chance to get some, if possible. My opinion is four years would be a good help with that.
So, I'm just going to just...
So, I'll go ahead and second your motion, and that means we're going to go ahead and see if we have any further comments on this.
Yeah, I have a comment. In some ways, you know, from our side anyway, from my side, I'll say, I look at this and the CSO position kind of similarly, because we're going through a relatively similar process and look like what had been contract positions, and we're close to make both of those full-time positions. From my perspective, trying to convince Bill and probably me here, I think that it takes quite a bit of time for somebody to learn about the tree layout in Atherton, the heritage tree situation, which is extremely important to us as a town and to our residents. And it seems to me that maybe four years for this position makes more sense, whereas maybe three years for the CSO position would make sense.
We're not taking them, I mean, we're taking them separate.
I'm bringing it up because, in fact, if you want your motion supported, we need to look at this.
Absolutely.
But the motion is only for the arborists and all of them.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
But I'm trying to compare.
Your comments are definitely aligned with maybe with our thoughts.
So, anyway, so I could very much argue that there's a difference between those two positions in terms of how much time it takes somebody to really digest the situation, digesting the code enforcement issues. There's some there, there's something there, certainly there's an issue there, but they may be a little easier than understanding the layout of all of these big trees and that kind, you know, which I think is a fairly substantial thing. I think what Steve said is important, but so, that's one comment. My second comment is, I think what Steve said is important because it sort of refocuses me. I was thinking about the trees in our right-of-way and the trees in the park, and in fact, it sounds like there's a lot of privately owned trees that are on construction sites that are just, that need protection that aren't getting it.
Right now.
Right now. And that is important, because Bill brought up the issue of, well, maybe we could save thirty thousand dollars in the park because we've got this tree, this arborist contract for the park, but in fact, if this increased cost that we're bearing here is related to managing tree protection principally at construction sites, and that's an added cost related to the building and development activity in the town, those costs can be passed along when we reevaluate rates.
Well, it should be in the fee structure.
Yeah, that's my point.
Sure. So, let's go ahead and call for the vote. The vote on table has been seconded, all in favor. Aye. And? And opposed? All in favor, so that's four to zero. Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you very much, Rick, for your good comments. Let's go ahead and move on to item number twenty-nine, code enforcement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Members of the council, you have the bulk of the report already, so I'm going to turn it over to the chief, who might be able to fill in some of the blanks about what the CSO component of things would be. We know what the code enforcement activity would be. We've got CSG out there now doing about twenty, twenty-one, or twenty-two hours a week, but that is not going to be able to address the encroachment permit process we're thinking about going through, the rocks and the right-of-way. There's just not enough time under that contract to get to that. We could increase his hours, and we could increase the tenacity with which he pursues code enforcement, and that's something for the council's much later discussion on the encroachment permit ordinance in terms of the philosophical issue of code enforcement. But we certainly have work for them to do within the CSO component as well, so we're presenting this to you this evening as an opportunity to kind of kill two birds with one stone, give a shared position amongst the PV and the CSO, or code enforcement component, and address some of the edge and flows in both of those areas. Chief, you have anything more to add?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, one of the things you will even see in the monthly city manager's report of the police department section is a number of calls that the department is going to that are actually code enforcement, but under the contract, and this is no fault of Mr. Cushing, he's not available, so uniformed police officers are handling it. That's not the philosophy of the town. We don't mind doing it, but then we have to turn it over to code enforcement. If we had a code enforcement officer that was readily available, we would just dispatch the code enforcement to those calls and then back them up if they needed police help with them. So, there was at least seventeen of those, or, well, all of them were code enforcement, but certainly a good portion of those were. That happens every month. We also know that from my view of the department back in 2010, that the admin support of the department, whether it's a court officer or a variety of things that need to be taken care of for a twenty-four-seven operation with thirty-five part-time and full-time employees, was just highly inadequate. In fact, like Mr. Jim Dobbie used to tell me all the time, he said, hey, I come in here, you know, and there's hardly anybody here. I said, well, who do you expect to be in here? Everybody's in the field or doing something or sleeping for the next shift. And so, I think this would give a lot of flexibility to that program. The priority would be to code enforcement, but if there wasn't, say there was only thirty hours that week, we have plenty for them to do. I think that three- or four-hour contract is a good idea, but I think the big sale pitch for a cost-benefit analysis, look what it would cost to get forty hours out of that position. It's considerably more money when you see the breakdown that finance and the police department did, analysis of what's going on around the county for code enforcement, the cost of a code enforcement officer versus, you know, a CSO, and then recommending a breakdown depending on the level of work that that would be, a portion of it would be dedicated to CSO, a portion would be dedicated to, a percentage to code enforcement, and then from that, we derive what we thought would be an appropriate salary from that. So, you know, it's totally a council prerogative here, but I think staff is seeing the need for, like we did in our, you know, the council's work group, where we said, hey, we need more code enforcement, and we're seeing a benefit, greater flexibility, I think, for the town overall, and it's certainly something for council to take a close look at.
Thank you, chief. Council members, questions?
So, is this position, you're proposing be underneath the police department, chief?
That's one possible scenario, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I assume that because you said that this position would be doing dispatch and management of your fleet and things like that. I wouldn't think you'd be decking administrative person and putting them into dispatch.
Well, no, I said they could be, yeah, we could use them. There's some opportunities to maybe hire somebody that's had both code enforcement and dispatch experience, so when we need to relieve our dispatchers, they could jump in there and give them a lunch break or what have you, especially during day shift, gets really, gets really busy in there. The supervision piece would be taken care of, because we probably put them under our other, with our other CSO, under Sergeant Alfredo Gherucci.
But in short, yes, within the police department, but code enforcement has, in addition to the public safety components of code enforcement, it's got a land use and zoning component as well, and planning and building and police, they work hand-in-hand whenever they go out and address construction hours and those sorts of things, so they would work cooperatively.
But our current code enforcement reports to Mr. Casualani, does it not?
No, he reports to...
To Steve and myself. Okay, so it's in the customer...
Right.
All right, so Steve, okay.
We don't want to have a contractor reporting to a contractor, so...
No, I understand, okay, I got that, but he's not in police.
Right.
He's not in police. So, the other question I had is I was going over the report, and I realized it's a 2010 report, and of course, we've had a lot of chance to put a lot of budgets together, and the council has supported every one of your budgets, chief, and this is coming a little bit of a surprise, is, hey, we really needed this person. And we've talked about, and I readily admit that we talked about increasing, you know, a little bit of time for Mr. Cushing, who, by the way, is doing an excellent job, and gets good reports from most of our residents. There's one or two that perhaps don't agree with him, but, you know, this is just coming up, for me, it seems to be coming up at the last minute, and it's just like, well, okay, we're adding some heads, so let's throw one in.
This, I'm sorry, chief, I'm going to jump in. We don't have a dog in this particular fight, and we know that code enforcement's a priority for the town. We know that there's a lot of code enforcement activity coming up. We respect the encroachment permits and other things. We know there's been a gentle shift, at this point, gentle shift, in the need for code enforcement. We talked about that at the Goals workshop about a year and a half ago. We extended the hours of CSG. What we're seeing now is that's still not enough to address all the issues that arise. I saw an opportunity to work with the police department and maybe share a CSO and code enforcement officer and gain, you know, two bags for the buck in terms of the edge and flow workload out there. So, that's where this is coming from, but there's no dog in the fight with respect to the PD and their budget and their need for additional time and staff, and they'll get the job done, and they'll continue to do that with whatever personnel they have, so...
So, I have a question.
Councilwoman Morris, go ahead.
So, could you just explain to me in the compensation analysis on the page two and then page three, in Hillsborough, you've got on page two, the code enforcement officer, monthly base of seven thousand seventy, et cetera, et cetera, and then on the top of page three, you've got Hillsborough code enforcement officer with a different level of funding. So, I was just wondering what that was, but...
That's probably a clear need for another name of city in that.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you think that's different city?
I'm going to reiterate the iteration of the reports here and see if I don't find...
How about Woodside?
Do you think?
Woodside's contracts, Sheriff's Department.
Okay, so I just thought if there was two different levels of code enforcement officer, so that was a question, and then...
Could, Robert, could that have been code enforcement one?
It seems that it could have been one, it should either be, I think it is code enforcement one, because it's clearly lower than the code enforcement team.
Right.
I can double-check.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it when I had my reading with the...
You didn't jut to do that.
Until just taking another look.
I believe that's what it was from my notes.
It could be different.
If there was some code enforcement one, they have two levels.
It was a two-level, one is a level one, and level one was a level two. That's what that was.
So, okay, and then at the very end, the fiscal impact, at step A, the fiscal impact of creating a full-time for CSOs code enforcement is ninety-seven thousand six hundred forty-eight. That would be the combined, that would be the level of compensation?
Yes, and that includes with the benefits.
Which is this one right here with Bennys in step A. So, and am I to understand that the, if we were to increase CSG to forty hours per week, it'd be two hundred and fourteen thousand at his level out current hourly rate? And of course, that's two thousand eighty hours, and of course, he would never work that many hours, but that's just, it just seems very out of why, because we currently are paying him, what, a hundred and thirteen? No, a hundred and...
Three hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve thousand annually. Okay, so, and that's for twenty hours.
Twenty hours.
I mean, just looking at the raw numerical data, it's a bargain, but there's all kinds of other discussions that need to be talked about, but those were my questions, not my comments.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And you are correct, I'm looking at the online Hillsborough salary schedule, and it's a code enforcement officer one.
Okay, so there's different levels?
Yeah.
And they do have two code enforcement officers?
Yes.
Full-time?
Yeah.
And undoubtedly, as we were talking earlier, code enforcement one has a step A, B, C, D, and then when you jump up to code enforcement two, usually it's slightly higher than the D step for the code one, and it'll go A, B, C, D again. So, these numbers could be, you might get two people in different steps here.
Do any of these code enforcement officers care again?
No.
No.
Not allowed in California.
We read that, no. I'm not going to make a comment.
That was a good question. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Quick clarification, the code enforcement officer within...
Thank you.
The police department would be a miscellaneous employee?
Yes.
Not one. Any more questions? Seeing no more questions, I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public that would like to make any comment related to this topic. Seeing no person of the public or anybody jumping in, we're going to go to closed public comments, bring it back to council. Final comments for council members, starting off with councilman O'Wittman. Be quiet.
I'll take my comment. Yeah, I'm not convinced that there's the workload to justify, you know, a full-time person. I'm sure if we had a full-time person, we could probably find ways for them to get involved. I think that, I guess the town staff, at least it seems like from the staff report, also implies that potentially that there may not be enough work for a full-time person, because they've suggested other things that that person would do, and so, you know, I think it's something we need to keep an eye on, but at this point in time, you know, I'm not in favor of bringing on a full-time person to do code enforcement, and that's essentially where I'm at. So, I'm not on board.
Thank you, Bill. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Well, I look at it differently. I think that we have, there's more code enforcement work than can be managed, and I like the idea of creating the flexibility by putting the person in the police department because of the ability to pick up the CSO work, which I think is lacking. I have a question, which is if a miscellaneous employee is in the police department, if this person is in the police department versus in Public Works, is there any fringe benefit difference?
No. Because miscellaneous employee for, which is dispatchers, are similar to miscellaneous employees.
Right, so the employee would be miscellaneous for CalPERS purposes, and so, at the pension level, there's zero difference.
Correct.
It's, CalPERS doesn't care what department somebody's in, they care whether they're safety or miscellaneous.
But it looks like in your calculation, Robert, you have a forty-five percent fringe.
Right, because, just to have the health benefit portion, but they, for CalPERS, they are considered, they're not part of public safety. They don't, they don't fall under the public safety category.
Chief, are the, is Erica in the APOA?
Yes, she is.
Yes.
So...
They're in the APOA MOU, that's why you see the difference.
But they're still non-sworn, for purpose purposes, they're...
Right, that's why there's a difference in the fringe benefits, because they are in the APOA, but for CalPERS, they're considered miscellaneous.
The largest component of the employee costs are health benefits and retiree costs. For those two purposes, the health benefits for local miscellaneous and for the PV are the same?
They're the same, except for APOA, they have uniform allowance, they have certain things, others things that aren't part of the...
Which is CSO doesn't get a uniform, so...
But are they, do they get the two-point-seven percent?
No.
So, they're at the two percent, two percent and fifty-seven?
At fifty-five.
I thought that that changed to fifty-seven.
Well, it's when the, if they've already been employed somewhere else and we're hiring somebody as a classic member of CalPERS, they'll come in at a two percent and fifty-five, which is what everybody else is at, non-sworn. If they are a classic, I'm sorry, a Pepper member, they've never been in CalPERS before, or they've got a six-month gap between service, between agencies, they're going to come in as a new Pepper employee, and then they are, what's the new one, Teresa?
Two at two-seven, I think.
Two at sixty.
Local miscellaneous, yeah. The lower we go.
So, if they're already a member of a P O A...
How about...
If they're already a member of another agency in the police department...
In PERS.
Okay. And they're accruing at the police rate...
No.
No.
This is not a police, this is not now, and no will ever be. If they were a police officer in another entity and they came to work here, they would come to work as a non-sworn person. Now, when they retire, there's a blending that takes place, you know, for instance, three percent at fifty is blended with the two-point-six, seven, whatever it is, at fifty, fifty-seven, fifty-six or seven, whatever it is. That is something that requires quantum physics and higher math, and I can't figure out how it's going to work in the future, because it's a mess now, but there could be lots of these. But just to be clear, this is a non-sworn person, but their business card will say Atherton Police Department. They will get five times the compliance if somebody says Atherton Building Department or Atherton Public Works. Trust me, I had code enforcement in the city attorney's office, and it tripled in terms of efficiency, so this is a good thing from that standpoint.
Okay, I'm looking at the numbers that you, that staff provided for the arborist position and this position with, if you take total comp, it's the increase of total comp over annual comp in each of those examples is exactly the same.
It's forty-seven percent.
Forty-five percent.
Yeah, it's exactly the same.
And the miscellaneous, if you factor out the retiree cost and the fringe rate, it should be thirty-three percent.
Well, fine, but so it may be a little off, that doesn't bother me. My concern was if we're putting somebody in the department, is it going to, is there going to be a cost that we're not seeing? It doesn't, it looks like there isn't.
Councilman Morris?
So, if you look at the code enforcement report for August first through August thirty-first, there are a number of open cases, twenty, that are still open, and a number of closed cases are twenty-four, but activity from fiscal year, which would have been July first through August thirty-first, there are a total of one hundred and ninety-four cases, and that's barely scratching the tip of the iceberg, because what is coming before us is we're talking about these encroachment issues, safety on our roadways and side easements that are not even being addressed at all, and this is not something that, it's not a new topic that we are just now talking about. We've been talking about it for many years, but realizing that we haven't had the resource of a code enforcement officer to start to look at some of these very dangerous situations, and with a program to educate our residents and bring them into awareness of, you know, what's going on and how they can comply and things. Bob Cushing's done a great job, you know, for the last six years or whatever, it's just that he hasn't had the time to address all of these. So, I think that hiring a full-time code enforcement officer with the thought that maybe he can do something with the dispatcher of police, I think that might be dreaming, because I think that he may be very busy on a full-time basis, and then just, I've always felt that the contract with Bob Cushing was really expensive. It was, he was very highly paid, and just the sheer comparable numbers, you know, that's why I asked, I mean, that's, it just seems like we're just going to get... I mean, that's, it, it just seems like we, we're just going to get double value for less money and I think that's something that we should explore. Then the, coupled with the limited contract, so we have limited liability and maybe we could get a good person on a three-year contract and we don't have to commit to four years. I mean, I'm willing to look at that, but I think this is something that, I think staff's done a really good job and I'm highly supportive of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. My perspective on this and seeing the concerns of many people to be have the hours. One, I do like the fact that it is under the police department, under this chief of police, that will hold the person to a standard and that we will be reviewing, like we do with police officers, a standard for code enforcement, CSO, because, chief, you've done a wonderful job and this person's going to be out there representing the town, doing things that frankly are going to be difficult to do as we move forward. We have a lot of issues. Creating this hybrid CSO code enforcement person gives us a extreme amount of flexibility based on our needs in two different departments, although we're going to have to make sure we track the hours they're putting the person in for, for the building, because that is clearly a component that we adjust needs based on that. So, that is going to be something that's going to be important for the chief as we set this whole thing up, that we're properly allocating the cost to what department, police department versus building. So, I think in the big picture, this could be a very big ask.